Good morning, we're gonna get started this morning with an invocation from Pastor Thomas Brewer, who's a chaplain with the Oklahoma City Police Department, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Braylee Dry, representing Girl Scouts Troop 3463. Please stand.
Will you join me in prayer? Father, we thank you for this day. God, we thank you for the opportunity to gather. Father, I pray that you will bless our city leaders. Give them wisdom and guidance. Father, continue to bless this city and continue to grow it and make it a great city. Father, be with our first responders as a service and our servicemen and women across this nation and beyond. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me to... In the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Brewer and thank you Braylee. Alright, I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and today is our final budget presentation meeting, and so there are no votes. But we do have presentations from Public Works, Utilities and Airports, and so item three are those presentations of the FY24 proposed budget. And from here, I'll turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you Mayor. Just to start off here as an opener, I'm gonna have the Budget Office give us a quick summary of the comments that were provided so far in the... through either text or email back on budget. We do have budget comments that closed. We closed those so we could summarize. In the past, we've had times where we've had so many that it took a little bit of time to get those summarized. Letitia, this is Letitia Thompson, she's Assistant Budget Director, I'm gonna let her just give the presentation here. And then we'll talk a little bit about additional comments if they come in prior to the adoption of the budget.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Letitia Jackson, and I will be... Letitia Thompson, sorry. I will be presenting the FY24 budget comments. So between the period of May 2nd through May 24th, we received nine comments. Five were received on OKC.gov and four were received via Facebook. On May 2nd and May 17, the Public Information and Marketing Office may post on Facebook inviting residents to provide comments on the city's proposed budget. Residents can continue to submit comments and we will report back if additional comments are received. So based on those nine comments, you have a list of those comments. But in summary, they are related to neighborhood traffic, walking infrastructure, sidewalks, road repair and public safety. And that is all on those budget comments at this time.
So you wanna talk about just what we'll do on closing the comments for additional comments that come in and then how we'll provide those?
Right. So if additional comments are received between... from May 25th through now, through the June 4th, we will email those comments out to everyone. And if you have comment... questions, you can still respond back to the Office of Management and Budget if you have additional questions on that.
So we'll get those out to everyone prior to the scheduled adoption of the budget on June 6th? Thank you, Letitia.
Thanks.
So next up, we have the Public Works Department, Eric Winger, our Public Works Director, will give us a presentation on the Public Works Department budget.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Eric Winger, Public Works Director. Happy to present this morning the Department of Public Works budget for the upcoming year. As with most budgets, there's a lot of effort that goes into, a lot of the staff participating. Today, we've got Debbie Miller, our Assistant Director, Billy Little, our Business Manager, Mike Miller, Financial Specialist, and then I've also got Shannon, that's helping us with the PowerPoint and presentation today. We've had a lot of division heads also involved with the budget as we kinda go through that. You're gonna see a few changes today. But let me go ahead and get us kicked off. When we look at Public Works, we're looking at a department, fourth largest in the city. We're behind Police, Fire and Utilities. We do infrastructure construction and maintenance, private construction review and inspection, and emergency first response services for our community. When we look at the division and we look at the number of positions, this next year's budget is about 400 total. Largest division is our Streets Division with 210 positions. It is our largest division. Our smallest division is our Traffic Division, our Traffic Engineering Services at 15, but you'll see the totals for each of the other divisions on this page. Talking about Oklahoma City, very large city, I think it's probably stated at every budget presentation, 621 square miles. But this really highlights a lot of those infrastructure totals for the community. So more than 3,800 centerline miles, that's more than 8,000 lane miles of street in Oklahoma City. We have over 800 signalized intersections, 12,580 different traffic signals covering more than 96,000 traffic control signs. Again, large city, large infrastructure need, a lot of work by Public Works when we maintain this infrastructure. This is our organizational line of business, and so this aligns with strategic business planning. This is part of our Leading for Results measures, but you'll see that we've got seven divisions that are listed here. Administration, Engineering, Field Services, Project Management, Stormwater, Streets Traffic Drainage and Traffic Management. So if you turn to your budget book on page C157, this is really the summary of last year and this year's budget. I'm gonna spend just a few minutes on this slide just to kinda acquaint two parts to the budget. We have an operational portion, which is all the staff and services that we provide as a department. We've got also the non-operating, and that's gonna be again, construction-related services, things that are not directly related to personnel. In this case, a lot of this is Better Street, Safer City, Sales Tax Funds and CIP projects that are assigned to the department. Looking at the first two columns, you're gonna see those were previous year fiscal year '23 positions. If you look at the final three columns and it'll show the percent change, we've got the FY Proposed 24 Budget. You're gonna see a significant increase in the administration. We are proposing four new positions, and those four positions are in that administration line of business. You're looking at what looks to be a decrease in Engineering Services. That's really an artificial decrease. And the reason I say that is, we actually, last year as a part of the budget, were converting from utility cut repairs that were actually being done in-house to making those a contractual service. When we made that switch last year, we did have to support the contractual service, and some of those contract dollars were in last year's engineering budget. Those have since been completed, they're not needed this year, and that's why that looks like it's a reduction, even though it's not a reduction in service. It's a contractual reduction that's contract completed. But overall, if you look at total operating expenditures, just slightly what is a 2% reduction, but it's actually a net gain in positions. So four new positions is, again, the reason for the biggest change is because the contractual service needs have been reduced. You're also gonna see there's a slight reduction in the non-capital, 200 million down to 189 million. We're just continuing to complete the Better Street Safer City Sales Tax Program. That's a program that's budgeted within the department. Bond programming is not. But that is the reason for that slight decrease as we looked to go forward. So as proposed, a $59.9 million operating expenditure budget and a $249.3 million total budget for the department. Major budget changes, we do have, and I'll highlight as we go on the slides forward, some personnel changes. I mentioned those four new positions, and we also have a reorganization that I'll mention as a part of the slides coming next. So Public Works Department budget, really by funding source, 249 million total. The largest percentage of the budget comes from the Better City, Safer City Sales Tax portion. And again, we're continuing to complete those projects, but you'll see other budget, capital improvement projects, impact fees, the drainage utility, and also the general fund making up the totals. When we look at the operating budget of 59 million, and again, this is per Personnel Services, largest, again, is Streets, Traffic and Drainage, nearly 41% of that total, and again, they're the largest division of the department requiring the most funding. But you'll see the breakdown of the other divisions included here on this $59 million operating budget as well. So this next series of slides, I'm gonna highlight the different divisions and the different components that are related to each of those divisions and what they do. We're also gonna talk just briefly about some of their... either search and survey, Leading for Results, Performance Measures. But this Administration section is the section budgeted at 12.1 million, 29 positions. And this is where we're actually proposing the addition of four new positions. Two of those positions are to enhance our HR services, to help us with hiring and services related to vacancies and positions. One of those positions, we're actually looking for Agenda Management, and again, with a number of agenda items and that need to be addressed for City Council meetings and other agendas, including the Traffic Commission, Bond Advisory Council. We're proposing a position there. The fourth and final addition is actually a position that's already been added to the department. It was an overage position last year. It's in our Administration section, and it was directly due to ARPA funding and grant management and things related to EJAH projects and a lot of the applications that we're submitting now today for future needs of Oklahoma City. When we look at the GAGE, for those that have not seen a lot of this as a part of our administration, the GAGE was the employee surveys that were completed last year in our Administration section, and I mentioned HR. Two major results came out of the GAGE survey when we surveyed Public Works employees, recognitions and communication. And so one of the things that we've actually come out this year, Shannon Cox has been the author of this, is we now have a departmental newsletter. It helps us with a lot of the announcements, not just city announcements, but things that are happening department-wide. We're able to highlight different work groups, work crews and individuals each month. We're getting ready to issue number four, so it's been highly successful. And again, just another way to help improve communications and throughput through the department. The Engineering Line of Business has Drainage Engineering, Technical Review and Paving Engineering, 32 positions budgeted at 7.6 million. And one of the biggest things that occurs in the Engineering Division is of course our plan reviews and our work with developers and contractors, which is a continuing and ongoing effort of the department. Looking at the totals and Technical Review, we have hit a record now with the number of permits reviewed at 7,330. This is the breakdown of those permits that you're gonna find on this page. We also reviewed 757 plans and issued over 135 work orders. Our Technical Review Section is that section that actually reviews a lot of the private development plans in Oklahoma City. And we've put together this historical graph just to kinda show the increase. And again, the permits are in purple, the plans reviewed are in blue. You can see the dramatic increase, the number of permits reviewed, looking at previous years. A lot of these have to do with small cell towers, a lot of these have to do with revocable permits for things in the right-of-way with just a lot of increased activity citywide. You'll see the actual number of plans typically ranges around 1,000 per year. We're just slightly under that for the year. We'll probably end just under 1,000, but again, we're holding pretty steady with a lot of plans reviewed across the community. One of the biggest items that we were tracking with our Leading for Results and our Strategic Business Planning was the turnaround time for those technical plan reviews that were occurring this past year. Just a couple of highlights to note on this graph, in June of last year, our return time was approximately nine weeks. We were having some staffing difficulties, we've made some adjustments. We began holding monthly meetings with the developers and contractors to figure out how we could better serve them. So by November of last year, that nine weeks was reduced to seven. And I'm happy to report that as of April of '23, we're down to a three-week return on reviews with our goal having been four weeks. And so we're holding that three weeks pretty steady at this moment. Looking at our Field Services Division, 4.6 million, 49 positions. These are the individuals that go out into the community and they're actually working in the right-of-way, doing all those right-of-way inspections related to water, sewer, both public and private development. When we look at the fiscal year-end estimates, this is where we're looking at nearly 9,900 right-of-way inspections, over 24,000 on construction projects with a work value of about 562 million. Now, these aren't just city projects, these are gonna be also private projects in the right-of-way, but all inspected by Field Services. A program that we were able to add last year is drone surveys. And this is a division that actually does survey for our city projects, and we also do some limited surveys for other city departments. But we're actually able to do a lot of these through aerial. It's helping us do a lot of inspections that are in remote drainage channels, bridge work. But we're also able to document projects more readily now so that as we present in the future and as we look at things, you'll be able to present pictures like those that you see here much more easily from the air than from the ground. Looking at Inspection Work Orders, and again, this is just looking at those trends from year to year, they remain fairly consistent. Obviously, we had some peak years in fiscal year '17, '18 and '18, '19, but we continue to hold about 575 as an average moving forward on inspections and work orders. Moving to our next line of business, Project Management, this is our division that mostly delivers the bond program, the Better Street Safer City Sales Tax Program, also our facilities projects, budgeted 5.1 million, 37 positions. There's a lot of information on this graphic, but to kinda get it grounded, blue is the bond projects and the history of the bond expenditures. The purple is the sales tax. This is gonna be the Better Street Safer City Sales Tax, both which were approved in 2017. So that's why you see in calendar year '18, a pretty dramatic increase from 77 million to over $100 million in output. What we're starting to see is that decrease in that purple bar, that's simply just because the Better Street Sales Tax Program is winding down. But you will see that we're actually starting to increase the bond delivery with a pretty steady average, just by the bond by itself at about $110 million a year. We continue to uphold this goal. We're actually slightly ahead of schedule on the delivery of the 2017 bond. Planning for the next bond issue and the initial planning is actually already underway. One of the strategic business plan measures that we look at is the bond expenditures, and there is a requirement by the IRS that the bond funds be spent within three years of their sale. The green line represents the 85 expenditure rule, and for more than the past 10 years, we've achieved that 85%. We're actually averaging about 87% by the deadline each year. So efficient delivery of the bond dollars as they're sold and rapid deployment of the projects. Looking at miles resurfaced, obviously the Better Street Safer City Program, one of the primary features is the reconstruction of city streets. And again, as we look at this resurfacing, you'll see with the addition of the sales tax, we had a peak year in fiscal year 1920 with almost 140 miles of street resurfaced, but we actually broke that goal as we estimate the finish of this year with 148 centerline miles resurfaced this past year. We're gonna be strictly on the bond funds going forward, but we're able to maintain that because the majority of the bond right now is in arterial street resurfacing. We simply did not overlap the sales tax and the bond program simultaneously because we did not have the contractual workforce to do that. But the local contractors are doing well, and again, at about $90 million a year, they're able to do more than 100 miles a year of street resurfacing in Oklahoma City. Moving to Stormwater Quality Management, this is our environmental water quality, household hazardous waste facility and construction industrial permitting budgeted at 4 million, 32 positions. program. Eight million pounds of floatable debris removed from the Oklahoma River. 547 rain barrels distributed to community members that had interest in Rain Barrel Program. And we had over 1,100 volunteer participants on our Adopt a City Street and our Curbs to Creeks Program as we help make sure that we've got clean streets and clean drainage This graphic actually summarizes this past year with the Household Heritage Waste Facility. This is located at 1621 South Portland. It's open Tuesday through Saturday to residents. It's also open to city employees if they'll bring their ID badge. But we actually collected nearly 700,000 pounds of household hazardous waste this past year, which kept that waste out of landfills and out of streams and creeks being dumped. You can see some of the totals for the different things here. 287,000 pounds of paint, 30,000 pounds of adhesives, 84,000 pounds of motor oil. So again, this is a program that continues to thrive and be very successful. We actually have MOUs with eight different cities that also participate in our HHW facility. And we collected nearly 80,000 pounds of waste from cities like Edmund, The Village, Yukon, Shawnee, Moore El Reno, War Acres, and Bethany. Once a year, we have a Household Heritage Waste Special Collection. This is from our April collection event. This actually was the highest single-day total collection since 1995. So when we look at this, it was our 46th collection event. You'll see 743 pounds of ammunition, 400 pounds of prescription medications collected, over 600 participants participating in that event, which was held at the Oklahoma City Stormwater Quality also has a, a large public outreach effort. This is one that is really strong with Oklahoma City Public Schools. So this past year, we nearly reached out to 14,000 students of Oklahoma City. On the photo to the right, you'll see Wayne Drop. He's our mascot for Public Works, and he, again, is a part of that outward education, just trying to catch them at a younger age to not dump things down drains that shouldn't be dumped and to recycle. Moving to our largest division, Streets, Traffic, and Drainage, which is Street Maintenance, Road Construction, Traffic Operations, and Drainage. These are just some of the crews as they're repairing potholes and actually laying down some, some new street throughout Oklahoma City. We look at the condition of city streets, and again, this comes out of the citizen survey. We obviously have a strong focus on improving city streets. You'll see that just almost 10 years ago, the average PCI, the Pavement Condition Index, which is a scale of zero to 100, 100 being a brand-new street and zero being the worst street, our average was in the 60s, low 60s about 10 years ago. But with Better Streets, Safer City, the 2017 bond, and the 2017 sales tax, and a lot of new streets being laid down, we are actually this year going to maintain that 70 PCI average, which has been a goal for a very long time. So we've nearly increased to that goal. We'll probably be setting new goals for that very soon. But again, without the Better Streets, Safer City Program, this would not have been possible. One of the outcomes of Better Streets is that with the worst streets also being fixed, we're seeing fewer potholes across the city. It wasn't long ago that we averaged about 80,000 pothole repairs a year. We're now in the 60,000 average at this point. So as we continue to fix those city's worst streets, we hope to actually see this number continue to decline. Our Streets Division also does lots of drainage and mowing services. We look at the next slide and the number of drainage repairs completed. We continue to average more than 1,500 drainage repairs each year as we work in public channels throughout the city. We also do traffic signal replacement and striping, and these are some of those crews in Public Works that are hard at work. And one of our programs that we've been working on for the past several years is the LED conversion of signal lights. So I mentioned we have over 806 total signalized intersections. We've converted just over half of those intersections to LED technologies. The new LED bulbs are, are more energy efficient, they also last longer, they also give us the ability to put signals on battery backup. And so we now at 93 intersections have battery backups, so when the power goes out, the signals don't go out. But LED is a requirement for that to run off of batteries. We're not able to do that off the older incandescent bulbs. And so we're continuing to move forward with this program. It's one of the priorities for Public Works. And moving to our last division, Traffic Management, Traffic and Transportation Services, Traffic Engineering, 1.7 million, 15 positions. Largest outcome that we had this past year was the updates to the Better, or, excuse me, the Alternative Speed Abatement Program. These were four of the new features that we were able to add to that program and outreach to our community with street alerts, which are basically painted messages on streets, driver feedback signs, which are the speed limit and radar-controlled signs that, that mark your speed, speed humps, and also many roundabouts. We've had over 32 applications received since that program was relaunched in January. And we actually have seven applications that are approved and many others that are under review. So we're moving forward with this program and look to have some results later this year. I mentioned at the beginning of the PowerPoint, we had some position changes, but we also have an organizational change. And so I present this to you today as something that doesn't change the budget for Public Works, but something organizationally. We're actually going to be moving the traffic portion of all services to Traffic Engineering, creating a new division of Traffic Services that combines those two groups into one. That'll mean that we have a Streets and Drainage Division that is maintained, but then we'll have a Combined Traffic Services Division. And really, this is for operational efficiencies, with the ability to have the engineers working directly with the field crews on projects like the LED conversion, on different upgrades citywide. It really streamlines that process of getting that information into the field and back out of the field and into the office much quicker. So with that, so my final slide, looking at fiscal year 2024, we're looking to do more than 100 miles of street improvement, 60,000 potholes, about 21 Street System Impact Fee projects to be awarded, 1,200 infrastructure plans reviewed, 700,000 pounds of waste likely to be collected at the Household Heritage Waste Facility, hopefully another redistribution of about 600 rain barrels into the community, and over 2,000 stormwater permits reviewed. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the Public Works budget.
I've got a couple of questions. Number one, as far as Better Streets is concerned, the way I read C158 is that while we're getting close to expiration, we're still going to be doing a lot of work in FY '24, and I think it's to the tune of like $83 million. Am I reading that correctly?
For just streets?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. So last year, we did about 100 million. This year, we're still doing 83 million. So it, it's not, the program's not going away yet. There's still a lot to be done.
There is a lot of work over the next two to three years in the paving program as a part of the 2017 bond. We simply just aren't using the sales tax dollars, but that same amount of work is being replaced with bond dollars going forward, yes.
And then a question about the economy. When we look at the Field Services Division, performed over 32,000 construction inspections last year, and then we had 7,330 permits reviewed, and our plans stayed right at around 1,000. What, what are we seeing with those numbers? What are they telling us with building materials more difficult to obtain and, and costing more and, and labor shortage? Are, are we seeing a decline in this process, or is it about the same, or is it growing?
So I think just from the trends that we've witnessed, at least as part of the department, we saw a slight decline at the beginning of this calendar year. I think there was just some anticipation, just based on some of the economists and maybe a slowdown of the economy. That did not happen in Oklahoma City. We do think that we saw a temporary fewer permits being received, but we're definitely picking back up. There is a lot of construction that's in the market here in Oklahoma City. We're seeing a lot of projects that were approved and not permitted now seeking their permits if they were permitted in the last year. So I would say the level of work in the community is, is really high, even though maybe the permits is slightly less. So we have not seen a dramatic decrease, no.
Okay. Last, I know you and Debbie have worked really hard on technical reviews and your staff, and the slide that shows the technical reviews down to three weeks, what a, that's great news. I, I want to commend you, I want to thank you. I, I know you guys worked really hard on that, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Couple more things to echo Councilmember Stone Cypher's comments on the technical plan review. I know myself and several of my counterparts kind of beat you up a little bit over last year, as well as a few members of the development community. So excellent job getting us to where we are today. I want to commend the staff on stepping up on that as well. I know it, it kind of took a village, so thank you. Next question, and this is a problem that I see in, in my neighborhood, and I am looking to see if maybe Public Works is already doing something along these lines, or if you can help me. And I was, I thought of it as we were looking at Wayne Drop, right? So we've got kids playing in storm sewers, and the, the concrete ones that are maintained by the city. When you're speaking to the students in those schools, is that a part of the discussion at all, or is it strictly about the environmental impacts?
I believe it's primarily environmental, but that does not mean that we can't also incorporate some safety into the conversation. So let me take the conversation and, and make sure that our staff is aware so when they go out, we include it in the future.
I would really appreciate that, and anywhere that we can, that'd be great. And then, Mr. City Manager, it'd be really interesting to see what it would take to get the city from a 70 PCI average to an 85.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Okay.
It's definitely something that we continue to be focused on, and as we look at, you know, towards the next bond issue, definitely something that we have to include in our conversation there. And if we talk about the millage level and all that, that's got to be part of that discussion.
For sure. But as you saw with the staggeringly few comments that we received from the public, they were primarily focused on that in one way or the other. Thank you.
On that note, just to build on what Counselor Peck is noting about the public comments, and I'm really glad you brought that up. I'm reading a book right now called Copenhagen Eyes, and it is about how Copenhagen, Denmark, became the leading city on planet Earth in terms of bike infrastructure. So I'm just 40 pages into it. But I think I'm better starting to understand why we're getting fewer comments, like why there are less people here at city council. And actually, it's related to the streets. And I just want to say this in public, I wasn't going to say it until you mentioned the comments, but it turns out 100 years ago, before the automobile, our public streets were where public conversations happened. It was where public sphere and engagement occurred. So we'd see each other because there's a juggler, right? And we're going to coffee or whatever. And then the automobile industry engaged in a massive marketing campaign to get people off the streets. Number one, they introduced the term jaywalking. I did not know this. Did anyone up here know this? I'm guessing, yeah, a couple people. They introduced the term jaywalking, which really struck a chord with me as someone from rural Midwest City, because what it was communicating to people was, the term "jay" was a derogatory term for like a country bumpkin. And so it made people feel like if you were at all walking the wrong way on the street, you were a rube. You were, you were, you were stupid, right? I mean, that, that was it. So it was a whole campaign unleashed on our people. And just think about Oklahoma City as like, how this part of the city used to just be bustling. If you go look at old postcards of John A. Brown on Main Street, et cetera, our movie theaters, but the automobile industry unleashed a campaign of jaywalking, number one, and that led to the creation of crosswalks. Like there were not crosswalks until really that moment. Number two, a lot of women, mothers specifically, were advocating that this new automobile, the nuisance of the automobile, was responsible for the death of their children. There were just accidents all the time where kids were being hit by this new car that was on the road where people were. So they started launching a campaign. So what did the automobile industry do? They did the second thing. They said playgrounds. We'll have playgrounds for your children. So now your pesky kids won't be on the city street. And that'd be fine if the city budget had ever kept up with the maintenance of those playgrounds. So you have two big things that lead to the pulling away of the person, the individual, walking around their city and talking to each other about the goings-on of the city. So we are 100 years deep now into the unraveling of the public sphere. So, and then you combine that with a lack of civic education in your schools. I told you at US Grant just a couple weeks ago, I asked them, how many of you know what a city does, a city council? One or two people raised their hand. So this is like, this is tragic, is what this is. This reminds me of the Middle Ages, like in the 1400s, when from 326 to the 1400s, the people actually were not allowed to read books. It, it reminds me of how there was this dome that was unfinished in Florence, Il Domo, and it said 100 years unfinished because the people of Florence had lost the recipe for cement, even though they had built the dome themselves. And that's what I think's happened. We have like lost, we have like a vague memory of who we were, but it's covered under 100 years' worth of car industry propaganda. And we've got to reckon with that. And so when we talk about Better Streets, Safer City, I am glad we are resurfacing the miles of streets that we are, but I hope as we go into the next bond, and I'm not letting this go, I hope we're not just talking about resurfacing streets. We have got to truly make our streets reoriented toward a balance with people, person on a bike, and the vehicle. Because right now, we have prioritized someone in a vehicle, moving as quickly as they can on streets, at the expense of the person. And it's led to people mostly retreating into their homes for entertainment. And that's, now we're seeing the consequences of people not even knowing what our city government does. And I'm guessing, because I now spoke at length, there are people who may have tuned me out because there he goes again. But y'all, this is the root of our problem. This is the root. Does anyone have any, I mean, comment on this? I cannot be the only person on council who thinks like this. This is like, nine comments, nine. Nine people spoke out of 600,000 Oklahoma Cityans. Or seven.
Seven, thank you, Mayor.
700. I just, I just think this is, I think this is epically tragically a problem. Like, this is not a cute comment I am making right now. So I hope as we go into the next bond, we're thinking much more clearly about how to truly make streets better and safer. Do you have, do you have any comments on what I've just said, direct? Am I wrong in that history? You come from Traffic Engineering.
You know, I've just, I mean, I think my comment would be as we look at the citizen survey very closely and really follow that, as we look at the nine comments that have come in, I mean, we're going to focus our, our, our staff and our crew and our resources towards addressing those comments. So absolutely, I see comments on here that are sidewalk-related, I see comments on here that are paving-related, and I think we can do both. So that's the direction that we'll head in this next year, and we'll listen to citizens as we go out for the bond surveys. Those will be coming very soon in the next year. But of course, we'll rely on the council to help make that decision on, on projects and going forward.
Okay, so that was just building off of what Counselor Peck was saying, just in terms of the comments. But my question, secondly, is what do I tell a middle schooler or a high schooler, or these people who are on Facebook who are always saying, fix our roads? You even literally see number six here in the comment. I'm guessing this is the same person who, no matter what the city of OKC posts on Facebook, it could be about animal welfare, there's like, fix our roads, you know? What do you say to someone, the difference between what does the city's sales tax go toward? Like the sales tax revenue we collect? How does Public Works spend those funds when it comes to anything related to streets versus the bond spending? Like, explain the difference, because I, I think as we head into the bond, I think there are a lot of citizens right now in this city who do not understand, not because they're at all stupid, not at all, I think they do not understand that we rely on the bond as our infrastructure improvement mechanism. So then the question has to come for them, well then, what does the sales tax revenue go toward on a day-to-day basis? And that's going to be helpful education information as we head into the next bond.
I mean, from a Public Works perspective, I mean, the sales tax is what actually funds all of our staff and crew. For the majority of that, and our street workers that are doing those repairs, that are doing those signal repairs, that are laying down lines, that are doing the potholes, that are laying down some new street, it pays those individuals, which are nearly 200 of just in that division, related to streets. We have another 200 in Public Works that are paid by multiple funding sources. We could pull the slide back up, but that is where the sales taxes go. They don't go as into the hundreds of miles of resurfacing, which comes out of the bond program. But the day-to-day maintenance and management of the city streets, not just including the streets, but the traffic systems, safe crosswalks, all of those different features are funded from the tax.
Yeah, I would just tack on to that. I agree with Eric that it's really, it, it'll pay for maintenance costs, but the vast majority of our capital investment, if it's streets, is going to be on the GO bond program. Other, other, I mean, other activities that are funded by the sales tax are really more the day-to-day activities of everything else, else we do in city government.
So like the pothole patching, that comes from the sales tax?
It's, it's a combination of revenues, because we also have the street now, what used to be the street and alley fund. So it was motor vehicle tax, fuel tax that we get from the city, and I don't remember what those numbers are anymore. They used to be around in the $5 million range, that we had a separate fund, we rolled that into the general fund to just manage all that maintenance side out of the general fund. So we align those revenue sources with that maintenance, and then sales tax supplements, any other costs associated. and then sales tax supplements, any other costs associated with that. So it's more, that's more on the maintenance side.
What did you call it, the street?
It used to be called the street and alley fund.
First time I've ever heard this.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's helpful. No, I just, this is, I think, critical as we head into the bond that we explain this to our residents, because I think that's a lot of their frustration. They don't know the difference between what the sales tax can do, what the bond can do. They don't know that we're restricted in terms of the bond, being that we can't use property tax to fund our services. So they think they're taxed to death. If you go ask most, most people, especially more conservative-leaning people in the city, they'll say, well, aren't I already taxed enough, right? And so that's something we have to be very careful in, is explaining the difference between these two revenue sources. So, okay. Thank you. Eric, great. I mean, good, good work. I just really want to commend you. You as the lead engineer in the city, stepping into a history that precedes you, where we just really went in the really, really wrong direction, and you're stepping in to right a ship. And I think you've done such a commendable job stewarding especially better streets, safer city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, great presentation. Could I get a copy of the newsletter when it comes out next?
Would be happy to share the newsletter, yes.
Thank you.
I just got a couple of questions. New guy on the block. Nine people that responded to, that's amazing that that is as low as it is. Would seem to me that if we were to have survey brochures at the hazardous waste pickup, at least we'd get six hundred and fifty people that would have a copy of that. Which brings me to the bond. You said there's going to be a survey that comes out on where the bond goes. How does that get to the public?
So if we follow how we actually went and outreach on the twenty seventeen bond, and the planning is just beginning on this, but one of the features that we had was we actually had community meetings that you could go to in person. You also could outreach and submit comments via the website. We also had social media, and then we had paper survey as well. I think we're probably using all of those, if not maybe some new opportunities too. But those will be very well made aware to our residents so that they can participate in the planning of the next bond issue, if they choose.
And that comes out when?
Likely next year in 2024, is when we'll do the public outreach.
Our expectation would be that we would see an election, another bond election in 2025. And so we're in the early stages of internal planning on that, and then we'll be reaching out to council through next year. So we've got some time here to work through this, but we working on what that public outreach will look like.
I just get asked that a lot, when we're going to get a voice. And your monthly meetings with the developers and contractors, if I can get an invite to some of those, I'd like to sit in.
So I think the good news is, is there's been so few comments that the meetings are actually starting to taper off a little bit.
Even better.
But let me make sure that invitation gets made, yes.
Thank you.
I had a couple of things. I would also like a copy of that newsletter, just interested in the accomplishments of, of our folks that work for Public Works, because in my opinion, between utilities and Public Works, they're the most visual as far as who we see every day. I saw utilities worker checking our water line right when I was leaving the house. So those are the people I think about, so definitely want to stay engaged, or at least know, put faces to names if possible. As we were, I was listening to Councilperson Cooper and his explanation of, of all of the things that he was talking about as far as traffic. My, my, I guess my question is, how integrated are we with our planning department with these types of conversations? And as I look at even our administration department that we have here, is there a possibility of us looking at how we integrate planning in these specific asks, you know, from other council members and even from our community, quite frankly, because of how we know we're, we're all planning, right? We're all planning for the future with our capital improvement plan, you know, all of the things that we know we need to look forward to. It just seems like, in my opinion, not to say there is a disconnect, but there could be a better connection if there is not one already on those conversations. So, I mean, that's just what I'm, I'm thinking. It's just a comment, you know, if, you don't have to respond if you don't want to.
I'm happy to. Actually, I think when the city initiated Project One Eighty, that was probably the first major program that Public Works and Planning came together to design a better street. When we started looking at better downtown streets, there was a full integration of the two departments. With the Better Streets, Safer Cities sales tax and bond issue in seventeen that included so many street enhancement projects, that integration wasn't just for P One Eighty anymore, it was for everything going forward. So I would tell you since 2017, the directors and the staffs of both departments have worked seamlessly together. When we're working on street enhancement projects, I think you'll find that even at the council level, when you see those plumber reports coming to the council, you're not only going to see my signature as a city engineer on there, you're going to see the planning director's signature right next to it showing joint support of both departments on the proposed improvement.
And that also extends, it's a really good comment, because it also extends on our GO bond planning, that the planning department's very much involved as we go through that process. Even as we look at the community outreach, they just manage so much community outreach in their planning processes. And then as we're doing our planning for the different projects we put in, so it'll definitely be integrated in that.
But there's regular meetings when we're working on individual projects between the staffs and the consulting engineers, they work together to, to provide that better street in each of those projects.
Okay, I appreciate that. And maybe outwardly, there could be some type of better communication of that, if that makes sense, you know, as far as how our community views that relationship, if you will, of, of how we work together in both of those efforts as far as planning and with traffic and all of the other things that Public Works does together. Another question I had, as we look at our potholes, I did see just an increase in that. How are we versus our actual street repairs? Are we paying attention? And I know, I know we are, so you can just refresh my memory. Are we paying attention to how many times we go out for the same streets as far as potholes are concerned? And are we using that as a way to add those same streets? Maybe to a list that we can move up the list, if you will, because of the increase in, in the number of potholes that we've been seeing?
So we do. We actually keep an active, it, it changes each time a street is redone. So as the PCI scoring on a street changes, as its average traffic changes, so if traffic increases, its priority increases, but the number of work orders is actually one of those weighted factors for how high a street prioritize on a list. And that prioritized street list is actually what's going to be used for the planning of this next bond issue. So those streets that have a higher account of work orders over another are going to be ranked higher. Those with higher traffic are ranked slightly higher. Those with a lower PCI are ranked higher. So all of those things will go into that ranking, but work orders and the number of times that crews have to repair is definitely considered.
Okay. And, and one of the things that I know we, you and I have talked through this quite a bit is even for our PCI numbers, it's really harder for us to measure our more rural streets because of the condition, and maybe they are less traveled, if you will. However, the neighborhood is saying this is an immediate need. We need this street repaired. So I'm wondering, as we continue to work through even this process, how, but I know it'll, it'll all kind of pretty much come out as we go through the bond conversation, but how we can continue to work through our more rural streets compared to our more urban streets? So I do want to continue to keep that on our list, especially for some of my, my roads that you and I continue to talk through. And you, and I'm so grateful that you've been able to help me counter and, and talk through that. So just put that on your list, if you don't mind, so we can continue to work through that. And also, my last one is the LED streetlights. Do you have a map of the, the ones we've already fixed?
I don't, but I mean, we could begin to develop one. I mean, we obviously have the locations, but not a map specific.
Just curious of some of those locations, especially for just maybe some core areas to see if, if some of those have been, have been done, so I can update folks that may ask.
Yeah, let me, let me work on that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
One more thing, and it's after something Councilman Hinkle said. Something I believe Senator Kay Floyd does is sends out a letter to their constituents. Just as we go into the next bond, the senator sends out a letter to their constituents on the front that gives them an update. When you flip it over, on the back are, I think maybe the senator has like a list of their priorities, but then it's like blank spots. What are your priorities for the legislative session? And she even asked, like, there's blank spots, so that, you know, your own kind of what your particular issue is. But then in addition to that, she asked, hey, the governor says this is a priority for them. What do you think? Hey, the Senate Majority Leader thinks this. And then she just sends that out. Like, I've received that, and it is very, very helpful. And then relatedly, I was talking to Boyd in our council office about this last week. Relatedly, where I live in the Passo, last week I received on my door just a simple, boring, no frills letter from a film crew that was filming at Flamingo Tiki. Little cool, you know, Hawaiian-themed thing. They, some comedy thing was filming there, and all they did was just put a, a letter on my door saying, hey, we're going to be filming for X amount of hours today, and we just wanted you to know. And I just wonder, like, sometimes even I get ahead of myself, and I'm like, oh, we should put door hangers, but that's expensive. And I wonder what, whether it's the water bill or a simple letter that went out to our residents as we start heading into the bond over the next year. I just, my point being, because we've emptied out our streets the way that we have, then we have to meet people where they are. Where are they? They are at home. And that's how I won my election. I went out and I spoke to people at their doors. It's how many of you won your election, you actually engage with them there. I think something as simple as a letter that asked, I mean, y'all have crafted, y'all have done this before, but.
James, in my view, on your first thing, on Senator Floyd's solicitation, that's what we, that's what the citizen survey is.
I, I had a feeling you might say that. It is and it isn't. It isn't so far as that survey is asking them how they feel about those services. What I am asking is to go one more step. And maybe we need to find Senator Floyd's letter, because the way the senator is asking that question, it is truly a, what would you like to see?
You're saying it's open-ended?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's both. It's yes and.
We could have that kind of question. I think we do, but I'm.
We, we do have one too. We, we have questions also that do priorities. So it's not just how do you feel about this? What are your priorities? And that gets rated. And then we look at like your ratings compared to priorities, and we do an important satisfaction comparison. So all those things actually happen. The open-ended, when you're sending those out, it's just a little bit more difficult to analyze, you know, to get that summarized in a way that, that's useful. There are some open-ended questions we'll ask sometimes, but it's just more difficult to get those summarized in, in a way like we can with.
Totally understand. And so they have labor. I guess what I am, yes, that's a good point, Mayor, about that is the survey. What I am asking is a very deliberate, we're planning our city's next bond, like within that context. What would you like to see us prioritize going into that bond? And then just maybe give them, and again, y'all have done this for years, but give them maybe the whole list of what we passed on the last one, those seven one. Like here are the needs of a city. What do you got?
And we'll get feedback when we go out, like Eric talked about the, you know, when we do the community meetings and just do them as open meetings, they're come and go, staff is there, and we'll have a lot of staff there to answer questions. But we'll get a lot of feedback on specific roads, specific repairs, specific parks. So we'll get a lot of individual feedback, but again, it's, it's difficult to reach the seven hundred thousand people. So you just try to take that information and assimilate it the best that we can and make sure that our decision-makers, that we're incorporating it at, and as we're evaluating it, and that our decision-makers ultimately have that information available to them.
Just want to make sure, what I, I guess what I want to make sure is folk are hearing me right now when I am saying, I appreciate those sorts of onsite meetings like you're talking about. What I am suggesting is, many people will not go to those meetings, not out of spider malice, but because maybe they're working two or three jobs, maybe you got soccer practice for kids, maybe they, whatever it is, but they're not going. But that doesn't mean they don't have a thought about a drainage need or a street resurfacing in their neighborhood. And so we've got to meet, we got, it's a yes and. We do these in-person meetings, and we send something out that engages them at their door. And then it's on them. Like, at some point, like, you know, that metaphor, you lead a horse to water, but at least we as a city government can say, hey, we met you at your door with the letter, we had this meeting, we had social media, we missed you, I'm sorry. Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you.
So next up, we have our Utilities Department, Chris Browning, our Utilities Director, will present the Utilities Budget.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'm mostly recovered from bronchitis, and we'll see how my voice holds up today. I have coffee, just in case. We'll see how it goes. Before we get started, I'd like to recognize a couple of folks who worked really hard over the last seven months to put this budget together that I'm going to present to you all this morning for consideration. We have Vanessa Aguilar, Business Manager, and her, her team. Thank you, Vanessa. Will, raise your hand. Will Huggins is our Capital Program Manager. You know, this, this year has been very difficult. Lot of challenges, unlike we've seen in, in the recent past. Capital program costs, capital project costs have increased twenty-five to thirty percent across the board. So we've had to make a lot of adjustments in our capital program that has been presented for the next five years. Lot of difficult decisions were made, rescheduling, reprioritizing those, those projects. Secondly, energy, electricity, ten million dollar increase over the last year, over ten million dollars. Chemical costs, some as much as five hundred percent increase this past year. And then regulatory compliance, this year not so much. We have one, one piece that we have to work on. We're asking to add, add staff for that one, but in the next five years, regulatory challenges are going to be significant within the water utilities. So with that said, I'd like to go ahead and, and present the budget to you all this morning. So our mission is pretty simple. We deliver three life essential services to most folks in the city every single day. Some folks throughout central Oklahoma every single day. We do that to protect public health and the environment, to support public safety, and to enhance the economic prosperity of the region. Several years ago, City Council developed their, their priorities. So we develop core business initiatives to align with those priorities, and they're, they're seen here. Everything in our budget, everything we do every single day aligns with one or more of these core business initiatives within the Utilities Department. So this is our proposed budget, eight hundred and forty-eight million dollars. These are the funding sources. So first of all, debt construction funding, we get those from a couple of sources. We get them from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board under SRF Funding. We use CAP, commercial paper, to fund some, and then we roll that over. That's like a big credit card. We roll that over into long-term debt. And then we have our service charges. Collectively, there are four hundred, they're predicted to be about four hundred and eleven million dollars this year. Water is two hundred and eighteen million, wastewater, one hundred and twenty-five million, and solid waste. Trash collection is sixty-eight million. We expect to withdraw forty-six million from cash reserves to make up some of that eight hundred and forty-eight million dollars. And then other sources of twenty-two million dollars include interest and miscellaneous revenues, about nine million dollars, billing, service fee, chargebacks. So we send out a bill every month, and on the bill are, are other fees, and so we charge for, for those fees to be put on our water bills. That's about four million dollars. System development charges, about six million dollars. Flow fees, flow fees are paid from the commercial haulers, the non-residential haulers, based on weight at the landfill, and we use that to primarily clean our streets, two million dollars. And then non-rate payer is primarily permits for recreational usage. And then oil leases is about a million dollars, and that money is spent on non-rate payer projects like repairing docks, things like that in our lakes. All right, these are the uses for the eight hundred and forty-eight million dollars. Most of it is going to be capital improvement, five hundred and twenty-six million dollars. We expect to spend three hundred and eighty-one million for water, hundred and forty million for sewer, and about five million for solid waste management. That's primarily carts and trucks. Then we have the city utility operations. I'll go into that more detail in, in a few minutes, but that's a hundred and two million dollars. I'll go into that in more detail in, in a few minutes, but that's $102 million. Our trust operations is $81 million, primarily for franchise fees and lease payments to the city. Professional services like banking, legal, the trust engineer, financial advisors, so on and so forth. And then other support services, pavement and landscape repair when we make repairs in our water or sewer system. Mowing services, we, we have a contract with Parks and Rec to mow around our, our water plants and our tank sites, those kinds of things. Software licensing and support. And then we have operational services and supplies, the electricity, chemicals, and inventory. Then we have debt service. We expect to pay about $60 million this year in debt service coverage. We have solid waste service contracts. The city staff picks up about 40% of the city, and then waste management collects the outer 60%, and they take care of growth. That contract is currently at $33 million. Our landfill fees, about $7 million. And then we have street sweeping and, and solid waste management, fleet maintenance. That totals about $47 million in solid waste service contracts. And then we have a water, our wastewater treatment facility contract, which is about $22 million, where we use a contract operator to operate and maintain our wastewater, our four wastewater treatment facilities. And then other uses total about $10 million. And this, most of that is in McGee Creek, is about $8 million. And then we're, we plan to put $1 million in our storm debris reserves. And then that $1 million that we're going to collect for non-rate payer, we're going to spend that million. So this is a breakdown of the city utility budget. So the, the first, first item there is, is we're going to add about 17 positions this year, and I'll get into that in a few minutes. That's 1.4 million. Our annual salary and benefit adjustment, that's primarily the merit increases for employees, is 2.2 million. Salary reserves, 2.1 million. That's for the anticipated COLA this year. Department services and supply improvements, about 1.7 million. Department transfers to Aqua. Now, this one, the 17.2 million, is primarily energy, and that's about $10, $10.1 million. What slide number is this, Vanessa? Six. Okay, we have energy, $10 million. Chemicals, $6.6 million. And then fleet services is about $600,000. Some of that, some of the funds are currently in the city budget, and some are in the, in the trust budget. It didn't make sense for us to have them located in, in both budgets, so we're gonna, we're gonna put them all in the trust budget this year. So that's why you see that $17.2 million transition into the trust budget and out of the city budget. And then city chargebacks, $2.9 million. And, and that totals about $6.9 million, roughly $7 million decrease in this year's budget. So the big decrease is because we're transferring the $17 million over to the trust budget. So we also rely heavily on the citizen survey results to drive what we do each and every day. And as you can see here, we're setting the benchmark across the board, everything we do. Our LFR goal is 10% above the national average, and you can see that we are well above that LFR goal. And so we're, according to our, our customers that we serve, we're doing a pretty good job in all categories. So this slide summarizes system growth compared to staffing. And as you can see, we're not, we're not really tracking very well. Our lane, our, our line miles, water and wastewater, pipeline miles have increased over the last 11 years by 1,100, and that's 18% growth. The number of customers has increased by about 100,000. That's 19% growth. And we've added 63 positions, which is 10% growth. So over the years, we've kind of closed that gap with technology advancements, and we have outsourced some of the things that we do. So, so it's not as bad as it looks. We're, we're not tracking exactly with our staffing versus our system size, but we have been able to manage using the technology and outsourcing contractors. So this year, we're focusing on three top priorities, three top initiatives, customer service, regulatory compliance, and, and career enhancement opportunities. So in the area of customer service, we would like to add two supervisors to help us implement our automated meter reading program. So we're automating all of our meters so that we can drive by and collect the reads rather than have a whole team of meter readers out, reading meters every day. That does a couple of things for us. One, meter reading is very difficult. It's, it's hard to train and retain meter readers. And so if we automate, that challenge goes away. Now, we still have to maintain those meters, so we're retraining meter readers to be meter service techs. Secondly, in inclement weather, we can't read meters. Well, if we, if we read them through an automated device, that, that piece goes away as well. So we have a program where we have put in a pilot to kind of debug the process, and over the next eight years, we'll be replacing nearly 30,000 meters per year to fully automate our system. So to do that, we need to add two, two supervisors so that we have more dedicated crews for that purpose. Residential plan review. Right now, our engineers are doing quite a bit of the administrative work, so we want to add an administrative person to take care of that work so that the engineers can be more focused on reviewing plans and getting them back to the engineers and the developers. Our capital improvement program, again, our engineers are doing a lot of the administrative work, so what we want to do is, is add an admin position there so that they can take care of adding things into bid sync and, and coordinating quite a bit of the work so the engineers can focus on the projects that they're managing. And then at, at Tinker Air Force Base, that, that capital program is about $100 million. We want to add a civil engineer there to help manage and coordinate that capital program. That position will be fully funded by the federal government. So the performance measures for customer service is 99% accuracy on meter reads, 95% of the bills issued within two business days, 95% of our plan reviews for residential. Now, residential plans are a little more difficult than non-residential plans to review, so we've, we've given that target of 15 days. And then on the non-residential, 10 days. So we want to turn them around in 15 and 10 days respectively. So as you can see from this chart, the, the meter accuracy is, is pretty high. It's approaching 100%. But to be honest with you, some of these were estimates because of bad weather and because of staffing challenges we've had with our meter readers. And then on the residential plan review, 15 business days of target. As you can see, like Eric said a few minutes ago, the economy is very strong in Oklahoma City. We're getting a lot of plans in. So we're able to review them in, in, you know, a, a fair amount of time relative to the expectations of our customers, but we're not quite there yet. So adding additional staff there to do some of the admin work will help us quite a bit. And so we're hoping to reach that 15-day turnaround time consistently. On the non-residential, we're closer. The average turnaround time is 12.1 days. We want 10 days, and so that's our, our hope for this next year. In regulatory compliance, we have been challenged over the last few years with new commercial pretreatment and industrial pretreatment regulations, particularly with medical marijuana. And so we are asking to add two environmental techs to the program so that we can better manage the amount of permits that we have to handle each, each day, and each month, and each year. Right now, our contract operator for our wastewater treatment plant is providing sampling services. We need them to operate the treatment plants. They're not operating 24/7, and we need them to transition some of their people to operate the plants 24/7. So we're going to take on those sampling requirements. And so adding those techs will help us in that regard as well. For the plant operators at the water plants, we need to be more consistent with managing all shifts, so we're asking to add three plant operator, three, three positions that will enable us to run both water plants, three shifts with an operator, three at the plant. And then we do have a law change for our utility locates. We have 72 hours to locate all utilities upon request, but that now includes Saturdays. So we have to add two water service techs to meet that need. So as you can see, we are very efficient in our commercial pretreatment requirements. Our goal was 95%, and we're at 100% compliance with all of our commercial customers. Now, what I've found in the past throughout my career is, once people are notified of what they need to do, they generally comply. So we're in good shape there. Our utility locates also, we're, we're highly compliant there, 97%. Our target is 100. And as you can see, we have quite a few permits that we have to manage each and every year. So the big item this year is, is career enhancement. The labor market is extremely challenging, and so what we're trying to do is not just attract, but retain employees. And, and that seems to be a challenge nowadays. What we do is very difficult, but we have dozens and dozens of career opportunities. And so what we want to do is, we want to, when we get folks here, we want to make sure that they stay here and that they know that we have many, many career opportunities available to them. We've developed Utilities University to help them develop their careers through 140 classroom hours of training. That helps folks not just have a job here, but a career here, and advance in their careers. So the Utilities University has two tracks. One is career development, the, the other is, is supervisory and management. So if folks want to advance their careers, we provide that opportunity. We are one of the most regulated industries in the nation. So we have requirements for professional certifications, not just for our engineers and our, and our accountants, but also for our operators. Anyone who operates, maintains, or repairs a water or sewer system has to be certified by the state. And so we have opportunities for folks to get those certifications and to manage those certifications through career development and PDQs that are available on an annual basis. So not only do we help folks advance their careers, but we help them manage their professional licenses as well. And then this past year, we developed an onboarding program. What we do is, we take all the new hires every quarter, we put them on a bus, and we, we take them around the city, and they get to see what we do in every single one of our divisions and what opportunities are available for them. Like I said, we have dozens and dozens of opportunities, engineers, accountants. We have folks who drive big trucks, operate big machinery. We have so, so many opportunities out there that if, if people come on board and they don't like their job, well, okay, we have a lot of other choices. So take advantage of those choices. So we take them around for two days, and we show them exactly what we do and how we do it. And so far, we, we've had four of those events, and we've received quite a few very positive comments from employees. So we're hoping that this helps us retain those employees. So as a part of career enhancement, we put together our learning management system. We brought in the, the technology, we implemented, rolled it out, and we trained all of our people. So we train almost 22,000 hours a year collectively throughout our organization. And so, so this learning management system helps us track the training, helps the employees track their training, helps them schedule their training, helps them get additional training. They can go online, and they can take classes online, they can take courses online, get certifications online. So we need a, we need to add an administrator for that program, so we're asking for a system analyst there. Our HR group has taken over some of the hiring processes from city HR for management employees, so we need to add a, an admin coordinator in that regard to help schedule interviews, schedule the screening, those sorts of things. So we're asking for an admin coordinator there. And then in our customer service group, we have quite a bit of training going on there for new hires, new, new customer service rep hires, and also ongoing training for the current CSRs where we'll evaluate what they're doing, how they're doing it, and offer training to help improve their productivity and their efficiency in the call center. So the performance measure goals in relation to, to the career enhancement is, 75% of our supervisors are on track to complete their Utility University mandatory training within three years. And that we also are able to meet 75% of our key measures, first, and the strategic results achieved for, for our learning, for our LFR goals. Right now, we're, we're at 76%, but at the end of this fiscal year, we should be somewhere above 80%. So we're tracking pretty well there. So the last thing I'd like to talk about is the capital program, just gives you some highlights there. So as stated earlier, the capital program for this year is anticipated to be $526 million. The bulk of that is the Otoka Pipeline. That second pipeline will enable us to pump all of our permitted water from southeast Oklahoma to Oklahoma City. That will satisfy water demands for all of central Oklahoma through 2060. We have nine segments identified within the pipeline. Four of those are currently under construction. We're going to bid the fifth one next month, and right after the first of the year, we'll bid another segment. So we're on track to have that project completed by the end of 2028. This, this year's estimate for that project is $159 million. Next is the Heffner-Drepper Interconnect, where we're physically connecting the two plants together with a large pipeline so that we have system redundancy. We've, we've run into some easement challenges, so we're redesigning a portion of the pipeline. We've had to redesign several, several times for one portion of the pipeline to help the landowner agree to an easement. And so hopefully, we'll have those three segments awarded this year. That will complete the project, and it's, it's expected to be about $45 million this year. year. The neighborhood small line replacement projects where we replace small water and sewer lines throughout the city. We have many miles of aged pipe, over 50 years old. So we systematically replace that pipeline. We've dedicated $39 million to that project this year. And then we have various facility improvements that we plan to execute this year. Some of our facilities are, most of our facilities are over 50 years old and require improvements because the machinery and equipment is, has reached the end of its useful life. So, so we're anticipating that we'll spend $147 million on facility improvements. And then general improvements throughout the city include 100, a total of about $136 million. 125 of that is for liability and resiliency. So we replace our, our rolling stock systematically. We're replacing the meters over the eight-year program. And then we have some work to do on the overhaul for dam this year. There's two phases. The first phase is about $24 million. It's under design right now. The second phase will be about $25 million and then the dam will be structurally sound going forward. It's over 100 years old, so it just needs a facelift. And then we're, we're upgrading our SCADA system and some of our other technologies. And then for solid waste, capital program is about $6 million. So with that, I would be happy to answer questions that you may have.
You know, I don't know if everybody appreciates how difficult this budget has been. You look at system growth, it's been unprecedented. You look at adding 100,000 new customers. You look at chemical costs going up, and in some instances, it's over 500%. $10 million in electric annually. And, and so I, I, my hat's off to you and Vanessa and Will. Nobody knows how hard this budget has been and you had to make some really tough decisions to defer some things. So I just say thank you for that. The other thing, I know what you're doing in your day job, but you also have this project with Tinker and this 72-inch pipeline, which is kind of an additional work. Can you give us kind of timelines on those two things and where you think they're headed?
Yes, so we are in the process of relocating a 60-inch water main that is parallel to Douglas Boulevard. The Air Force is closing Douglas Boulevard in, from 74th to 44th. And so we're rerouting that pipeline. It is under design right now and is expected to be relocated and back in service within the next couple of years. It's ARPA-funded and so we have to have everything completed by the end of 2026. Now, the big challenge is we have to connect this 60-inch pipeline without turning off the old one. That's going to be tricky, but I think we have a plan. So that, just to put it in perspective, that pipeline serves about 400,000 people here in Oklahoma City.
And then on the 72-inch pipeline to southern Oklahoma, we're tracking, I think you said, around 2028?
Yes.
For completion?
Yes.
And then as far as the interconnectivity between the two, between Draper and Heffner, what are we talking about on that on a timeline?
If, if we get the easements and get to bid all three segments this year, it'll be about two years.
Thanks for a great presentation. I appreciate all your hard work.
Yeah, I do have a question about the electricity cost increase. What, so you said that was kind of out of the norm. What is the normal, like year-to-year that we typically will budget for, for that increase?
It's about 10 and it's increased 10. So it's doubled.
Oh, wow. Do?
Now, that's primarily for water treatment.
Okay. Is there something that we attribute that cost to?
Yes.
Can you share what it is?
Yes, ma'am. OGN has had five rate increases this year.
That's what I thought.
A lot of that's tied back to the storm, right? Recovery from the storm from a couple of years ago that we, we see on our own accounts.
Right, on our own individual. So now we're also feeling it through the city.
That's right.
And paying, sort of everyone's paying a little double through their rates essentially.
Just so you know, we have a very comprehensive energy evaluation program where we have consultant on, on, on board who regularly evaluates our rates and, and what we might want to do to cut some of those costs. We have generators at Draper that we can shed some of the power and lower those costs. So if, if they call us and say, hey, we need you to, we need you to shed power for this period of time because of their peak demand, we get a lower rate for that. So we do that. We're on that program now.
Well, I appreciate you all doing what you can to sort of manage those costs, especially given that, yeah, we had some maybe other regulatory failures above us to, to spread those costs out to, through different sources. Cause I, I know, I, it piqued my interest because as I've talked to people, especially older folks on pretty fixed incomes, that they're not, you know, going to get huge bumps in their social security checks, but they're seeing that reflected in their own utility bills that, I just was curious if that's where we were feeling it, if there was something else going on. So I appreciate it.
One, one other thing I'd like to also mention, significant cost for chlorine. That was the one that went up 500% this year. We're, we're transitioning from chlorine gas to liquid chlorine that will generate onsite at all of our treatment facilities. And so over the next few years, we'll be transitioning. That does a couple of things. Number one, we're not hauling tanker loads of chlorine gas through the city and we don't have these large containers of chlorine gas in the city. Secondly, it alleviates the, the total dependence on, on chlorine for water and wastewater treatment. So we're heading that direction.
I just had a follow-up question to what we heard from Councilwoman Hammond. For those who may be watching and they may get a clip of just that piece, what are some of the ways we are working with those same residents to ensure that they still can maintain their water at home and, and the things that they need at home? I know we, some of us know about it, but if you'll just reiterate, just because of that question being raised, what we're doing to help subsidize or just ensure that our residents are taken care of?
Yes, ma'am. So we, we created a four-tier rate structure several years ago that you all approved. The, the first two tiers are indoor water users. They use the same amount of water month after month after month. Maybe a little bit more in the summertime because of more clothes washed, more baths, but generally about the same amount of water. We have to design our wastewater treat, our water treatment plants, our wastewater treatment plants and our pipelines to, to serve the peak demand. That's the significant cost. And so we've structured the indoor water users with rates much lower, particularly the low-volume Folks with irrigation systems, they generally hit tier three in the summertime so that the, the costs are higher there. And then folks with large irrigation systems or those who like to water every day and they exceed 25,000 gallons a month, their, their rates are significantly higher. So, so we're, we're managing our, our non-peak demand users at a much lower rate than we are others to, to, to normalize the cost of their water and sewer fees.
The other thing you mentioned, career opportunities. We have 17 new positions. We have vacancy all the way down to meter readers. How does one find out about those career opportunities?
So we have, we've had a number of career fairs through HR. They've done a really good job advertising the career fairs. But to be honest with you, when I started, I started as a labor in, in a wastewater plant. And I knew that's not what I wanted to do the rest of my life, right? So I had a choice. I could either go somewhere else or I can figure out on my own, you know, what, what else do I want to do that's available here? Well, we're, we're offering that opportunity to all of our new hires so that they want to stay here. If they want to be a chemist, we'll train them to be a chemist. I mean, we'll even pay for their college. You know, so, so it's a huge benefit. It's just a well-kept secret. So we want to help people understand that they don't have to go somewhere else to do something else. They can stay right here. And they can, not just utilities, but the whole city offers so many opportunities. So we're trying to help folks. It's so hard to hire people nowadays that we want to keep them. So we're focused on that this year.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
So next up, we have Jeff Mulder, our airports director, and Jeff will give his presentation on the airports budget. I just want to mention on both the water utilities or the utilities budget as well as the airports budget, we get the presentation and it will include both the trust budget as well as the city budget. So they combine because you get the full impact of the operations of airports or utilities. COP is the same way. So I just wanted to express that before we start here with Chris. What, what, I'm sorry, with Jeff, what Chris laid out showed both their, you know, their capital plan, what they're doing on operations on the utility side, as, on the trust side as well as on the city side. So I'll turn it over to Jeff and let him present the airport budget.
Good morning, everybody. I also have Melissa here from finance and Tara and Scott here support me this morning. So in the budget book, the airports are on page C3. As Craig indicated, I'm going to talk about the overall trust budget first and then later in the presentation, I'll get into detail on the city portion of that budget. So our mission here is provide management operations of our three airports and, and safety, efficient transportation system. Next slide. So this is how we are organized. Administration is pretty self-explanatory. Commercial aviation is essentially our, our airline operation. General aviation includes our two airports. Maintenance, of course, means, maintains all of our activity. And then property management and development is maintaining all of our leases, generating revenue, and then all of our construction activity. Next slide. So the story for us this year on the revenue side is a rather dramatic increase. And, you know, that's, that's reflective in our recovery here as, as a market and the, and the activity that we have at the airport. We expect to continue to see increases in revenue from parking and concessions and landing fees and other things as the activity continues to return. One of the items there on the line that says tenant at $12 million, that's a little unique for this year. That actually comes from one of our tenants. We're going to be building an aircraft hangar for them, for AAR, and they're contributing a portion of the cost for that project. There are some other funds coming from the state of Oklahoma, but that's what that represents. But, so the revenues are 122 million and then we have carryover of 19 million from project funds and senior lean is our Mike Monroni, our nautical center activity that we manage. So next slide. And then on the cost side, we, I'll get into this a little more detail in the city portion, but what we're seeing is an increase in expenses in a lot of our service contracts. We have undertaken a new contract for janitorial, for some of the security services we provide, for our parking activity and, and then our firefighting. So those are all service contracts. And what we're seeing from all of those service providers are increased costs for personnel, both to attract and retain people. It's the same story that many organizations are dealing with and we're dealing with it also. So it's driving increased costs for us as an organization. So next slide. And so our capital program, this is the way it breaks down for fiscal year '24. $50 million for Will Rogers. I'll have some specific projects to talk about there. Wally Post Airport includes 19 million. There's a rather large project that we're undertaking there. Mike Monroni, 31 million in projects that we have slated for this next fiscal year. Clarence Page has a project and that comes to a total of 102 million. This is a rather significant increase. Typically, this fiscal year, we're about 60 to 70 million. But a lot of what is driving this capital improvement is the opportunity there with additional federal funds from the FIA. That's making, that's providing us opportunities to pursue grants and pursue additional projects. Next slide. And these are the funding sources. 25 million from the airport trust, 33 from the grants, 31 million from tenants, the tenant, the 12 million specifically is with AAR, and that gives us our 102 million. So some of the projects that I mentioned, so boarding bridges, we have 21 boarding bridges at the airport. We have four new ones that were part of the project from a year and a half ago. So 17 of them are old and need to be replaced. The boarding bridges never really were eligible items for federal fund, for FA funding. Two years ago, with the bipartisan infrastructure law that was passed, the FA expanded eligibility for, for projects in the terminal area. So we're taking advantage of that and we're currently out to bid for six new bridges. So we plan to, over the next couple of years, take five to six bridges a year and replace them. Next slide. This is a project, Federal Inspection Station. So when the new addition was built, which includes the four gates on the east side of the airport, on the lower level is the photo on the bottom, which is an open space. It's about 30,000 square feet. We are going to, we are in design right now to develop that into what's called an FIS. That is where Customs and Border Protection would station themselves and ultimately then be able to clear international flights into Oklahoma City, airline aircraft. So we will be, we're in design now. We expect to do construction next year and our target is to have that open and have international flights starting in the first part of 2025. Next slide. This is a project I mentioned for Wally Post Airport. If you look at the photo, there's, there's two north-south runways. The one on the left is a project to widen runway 17 right. What that will allow is better utility at the airport. It will allow a lot more aircraft to use that runway in its wider condition and improve efficiency, traffic flow, and even interaction with the airspace here in Oklahoma City. So a couple of things I wanted to talk about as far as leading for results. Parking is something that is, it's really one of our, one of our higher revenue streams for the airport. And what you, what that, what that slide represents there is we had a serious parking capacity issue in fiscal '19. Of course, when you combine fiscal '20 and '21, '22, a lot of that was COVID impact and we certainly are coming back. The estimate that we have for fiscal '23 is only through March. Our busy season really starts right after that, April and May, and we're seeing that. And we expect that percentage to continue. But what we're doing is, a study was done by the airport, I think it was in 2015 or '16, that did an analysis for where we need to add parking and capacity. And we know we need to do that. And I think right before COVID, the momentum was there to move forward. And so we are, we are reviewing that study and expect that we'll begin a design effort for additional parking here in the near term. It takes a number of years to build a parking garage, but we expect as the traffic continues to return. It's an important service we provide and we want to make sure we're meeting the needs of the customer. Next slide. This is for our revenue from our concessions, our restaurants and gift shops in the airport. This also tells the tale of COVID. You can see, of course, fiscal '20 and '21, really no activity at all. But what also happened in fiscal '20 is the, the airport, the program at the airport changed hands. The contract expired for the operator for restaurants and gift shops and a new operator was brought on. And so over the last couple of years, they've been rebuilding the new, the spaces out with new restaurants and shops. And that's reflected in the numbers we're seeing and we continue to see that growth over the next couple of years. We, last fiscal year, we were about 1.2 million in, in revenue from that activity and we're going to be almost $2 million probably by the end of this fiscal year. So we continue to see that growth as the traffic comes back and as we add new amenities. Next slide. And that shows you some of the things that have just opened up at the airport here in the last couple of months. Osteria opened up on the West Concourse, which is a local restaurant. And then the I store is a technology store and News Nine, Oklahoma Zone, News Nine is a, is a travel store. And so those are just a couple of things that are examples. We have, starting this fall, the OKC Grill will be remodeled into Hatch, which is another local restaurant here in Oklahoma City. So they've all been very well-received and it's a nice reflection on the, on the local community and provides some great amenities for our travelers. A couple of the things I wanted to mention of new programs that have started at the airport, I don't have a slide for them, but one is the TSA used to have a canine program or, or dogs at the airport. And about five years ago, the TSA took the dogs out of Oklahoma City and moved them to Dallas Fort Worth. And about five years ago, the TSA took the dogs out of Oklahoma City and moved them to Dallas Fort Worth. The dogs are coming back. They'll be here, starting here in the next week or two. And what the canines are used for is for screening of passengers and baggage. And which of course is helpful in having passengers move through security lines. It's also helpful for screening bags when we run into capacity issues. So that's a positive for us with our growth coming back and having the canines here. Another program that was implemented by our staff was the Blue Lightning Initiative. The Blue Lightning Initiative is Department of Homeland Security program for human trafficking that helps people that work at airports and in the industry to identify human trafficking, provide some assistance, provide information. It's a pretty prevalent activity that happens in air transportation, unfortunately. And so we've offered training to our own staff and to our tenants to educate them on what's going on, to try to help put signage up in the airport and to try to help whoever we can, who unfortunately may be caught up in that. So next slide. So passenger numbers. This shows you, of course, the COVID impact with the drops and then the increases. And if you go to the next slide, Melissa, it shows the numbers that we have. Our record year in Oklahoma City was calendar year 19, 4.4 million departing pass, or total of passengers. You can see the drop we had. Last year, we had a nice recovery. And we, we expect this year, based on our trends, our first quarter for passengers this year was a record, exceeded the, the number of passengers we had in the first quarter of calendar year 19. So we expect that we will exceed, be close to or exceed 4.4 million passengers for this calendar year. Next slide. So this shows you a map of where things stand today with our air service. And first of all, you know, I would, I'd say to anybody, how is our, our service in Oklahoma City? I think the map does represent pretty well. We do cover the four corners of the continent, which is great. A lot of markets would strive to do that. And are obviously very centrally located, as you can see that. But the, the dash lines represent seasonal service. So that's not daily service and the solid lines are daily service. We've, and, and as far as recovery goes, we are, we are missing some routes that we've had pre-COVID. Detroit was a nonstop. San Francisco was a nonstop. Philadelphia and Newark. Some of those are related to the business activity. Detroit, especially a business market, hasn't come back because the recovery's been more leisurely focused. San Francisco, that's a gateway for Asia. And, and Asia has had slower recovery, more COVID impact. Some of that's an explanation. But really, the biggest factor that we're seeing in the industry is the airlines do not have enough pilots. What happened was in early 2020, there was early retirements offered to pilots and airline employees because the airlines didn't expect they were going to be operating in six months. A lot of them took advantage of that. They created a very large gap then in the, in the workflow and in the workspace. And travel recovered pretty rapidly. And so there's been lagging of enough pilots. So the air, there are airplanes available to fly those routes. They just don't have the flight crews. It takes a number of years for a pilot to do training and get the experience required. So it's a matter of, we expect a matter of time that we'll get these other markets back. But there are some challenges to becoming an airline pilot. One of them, I wanted to mention to you that I think is a positive development is it's very expensive for flight training. Fortunately, in, currently in Congress, there's a bill that's been introduced that would help make flight training eligible for federal student loans. That is, they are not eligible for federal student loans today. And airline pilots are paid very well. So there certainly is propensity to pay back the loan. So that's one area that we think could help reintroduce and invigorate the pipeline for pilots. But so those are some of the things that we're dealing with. But even despite that, with less flights that we had in 2019, we're seeing the same number. So that means airplanes are full. The airplanes that we're seeing are larger. So you can maybe have fewer flights, larger airplanes. So I, I think it though shows the resiliency of the market here and the marketplace in Oklahoma City. So we're seeing the same passenger numbers with fewer flights. Next slide. So this is the portion of the city, city airport operations budget, $25 million. And you can see it's broken down into those five areas. A lot of that is personnel costs and other, and other related costs associated with the city portion. Next slide, Melissa. So we are, in this proposed budget, we are adding six more positions. And our focus is on improved process efficiency and workload. One of the challenges that we have and will continue to have is we have a large capital budget, but we have a lot of work to do and we are not expending our capital program. We get about 50% of our projects done on an annual basis. That does end up being a problem. Ultimately, we're trying to keep up with growth and to meet the needs of our tenants. So we've added some positions to try to help with that. We've added a purchasing specialist, a trust specialist to help us with all of our trust items, an engineering assistants, IT people, all with the idea of trying to increase and improve our delivery time for all these projects. Also, as, as the other presenters talked about this morning, we've upgraded several positions in order to try to attract talent to the airport. A lot of them in the technical trades to try to compete. So those are some of the other moves that we've made in this budget. Just a couple of our, I wanted to highlight our, our various departments. These photos were taken in the last probably two years. And it shows our airfield operations. Some of these are interesting locations. You don't, people don't get their pictures taken very often, but that's an actual airplane in the background. It's not self imposed there. But so those folks take care of our airfield safety at Will Rogers. And those are our grounds and maintenance people that take care of a, a lot of the, the land side and a lot of the, the public facing space that we have at, at the airports. We have our own fuel farm. You can see the fuel tanks in the background. And that's our fuel team. And I, the airport trust board was made aware. We had an issue last week where the fuel pipeline from Phillips, the pump failed and we weren't getting fuel at the pipe, at the fuel farm. And so we had to truck it in and our fuel team did a great job of keeping the airplanes flying and keeping the fuel flowing. Next slide. Equipment maintenance. We have lots of things to maintain to over 8,000 acres at Will Rogers and our other two airports. And these guys make sure everything's working. This is another interesting shot. You can tell that's on the airfield on the runway. And these guys take care of everything, pavement and lighting and everything else that is important for airfield safety. And our building maintenance, our main terminal, obviously, we see a lot of people go through the airport every day and they make sure things are working. General aviation for our two airports, Wiley Post and Clarence Page airports. And this is our crew that takes care of those airports. And administration, the people that make sure everything keeps moving together. And that was a photo taken, you can tell that's in the new expanded space. This was about two years ago, right before the checkpoint went in. But that's some of the, the view from the mezzanine level. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions?
Yes. Could you clarify for me, so we have 21 of the terminal?
The bridge, the boarding bridges?
Yep. Yes. And so the six that are, walk me back through. We're, we're not adding new ones. We're replacing with the recent federal bill.
Right. So we, four new were added with the terminal addition that was completed in 2021. So then there's 17 older ones that are 25 plus years old. So this, this fiscal year, we've received some funding from the FIA, which we're adding some of our own to replace six of those bridges. So then our plan would be then the following fiscal year to do five or six more and then until we are able to replace all of them. And it becomes a challenge. Of course, it's critical to connect the passenger in the building to the airplane and that's their primary function. But a lot of mechanical activity and, and, and systems on those bridges and they're very labor intensive and they need to be replaced. So it, it definitely will improve the customer experience during boarding and deplaning.
What is the lifespan of one of those?
So the ones we have are all, the older ones are 25 plus years. So I mean, they've definitely meant their useful life.
And then what was it about an international connection?
So the, the FIS, Federal Inspection Station is on the, the space would be on the lower level of the new addition to the terminal. And there are customs and border protection. There's an office here in Oklahoma City today. And they do clear aircraft that come into Oklahoma City, but only private aircraft. This facility would allow us then to have airline service from outside the US, land in Oklahoma City and their, and the passengers clear customs here. So that allows us then to begin direct international flights from Oklahoma City. Our target is really Central America, Caribbean, Mexico. And we, we feel there's a strong, there's already a strong market that exists there today. When we look at the number of passengers today from central Oklahoma that go to that region, there's about 150,000 people a year that travel via air there. Most of them drive to Dallas and depart via Dallas or Houston. And, but we just, we, we, so that operation, that activity that we're able to build at the terminal will then allow us to have nonstop flights, Central America, Caribbean, and Mexico.
So we'll be at World Airport in action, indeed in acts. And then just something else. I just saw Matt Goode's art floating around Instagram. He's a Ward II resident. And I just saw that over the last couple of days. And I just really want to commend anyone involved in the implementation of that work. If y'all have not seen it yet, there along the airport floor. I, it's just, it is remarkable. I haven't flown in a few since October. So I'm really looking forward to later in June getting to go see it for, for myself. But it's, it's spectacular. It really is. So just kudos to everyone involved. So thank you.
All right.
I just have, hold on one second. Sorry. I just wanted to go back to our concession and programs. And I know one of, one of the focuses I've had in the past is the diversity of our local businesses. And I, I heard you speak to some of those local businesses, but I'm still curious as far as the, that diversity piece. I, I didn't see any. So I'm just curious where we are and what we're doing to target to ensure that we have that representation in the airport system. And I say this as an example of one of our local businesses that is housed in Penn Square Mall, Good Girl Chocolate is now at Tulsa Airport. So for me, it's like, uh-uh, we're not going to let them outdo us. How can we ensure that we get something or a business like that in our local airport?
So the program, there are guidelines. There's actually federal guidelines for airport concession programs that require ACDB participation. So there's, every program has a percentage goal and they incorporate that into the program here in Tulsa and Oklahoma City and all the airports. I, I don't have the details, but I'd be happy to share them with you. We have a, this program operated by Paradies LaGuardia is the company that operates the program. They have a number of vendors where they have local DB participation partnership with. And so that's, that's part of every airport's program. But I'll get you the detail of that and, and let you know. And we are also always looking for new participation, new participants. And I'll certainly will reach out to that local operator, see if there's some interest. The decision making is, you know, finding location and space and proximity. But we're always, and our operators always looking for local opportunities to try to integrate them into the airport. So I'll follow up and give you some details.
Thank you. And I, again, I'd love for us to just sit down and, you know, brainstorm some other smaller, maybe local businesses that I would love to focus on as far as our, our communities are concerned, that will want, want that type of participation and representation. Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. All right. Well, that concludes our presentations. We do have three residents who have signed up to speak under item four. And we'll start with Glenn Kospur. And if each resident would not mind stating their name and address and limit remarks to three minutes. Welcome, Glenn.
I am chairman of the Oklahoma City Metropolitan Association of Realtors Government Affairs Committee. Two years ago, our members were asked, what is the most important policy issue that realtors should be working to address? In specifically conducted poll, 64% of our membership ranked homelessness as the issue. Responding to that mandate, the association tasked the government affairs committee to spearhead the response. We responded by creating a campaign to educate and dispel myths about the homeless in Oklahoma City. We also have worked to support our homeless neighbors by donating funds, recruiting volunteers to support programs that serve them. But the most critical effort is realtors coming to you today, united and expressing our support for the efforts of this council to address homelessness in our city. What you have proposed in the 2024 budget is a critical step in creating a comprehensive strategy to address our homeless challenge. While your previous efforts are to be commended because they are needed, what you have proposed this year will be a game changer. The strategy that will be funded by this budget, bringing private and public dollars together is how we will get the community behind the effort. Especially the key to home partnership. If successful, this partnership will put in place strategies that will target the most chronically homeless and find a way to get them housed. What we have learned, housing is the key. If we can get them housed, we can help them start anew. A life that will get them back to a place where they can make choices that will improve their quality of life and engage with us as we all continue to make Oklahoma City a great place to live and work. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am the managing broker for JPAR Edge in Norman, Oklahoma. I'm also the vice chair for Policy Committee for Oakmar. When we responded to the survey to address homelessness, I was one of several that benefited from a tour of the Homeless Alliance in Oklahoma City still during the pandemic. And it was through that tour that I got to meet Peter. If you are around the Homeless Alliance or the homeless efforts in Oklahoma City at all, you'll know who Peter is. And the reason he was so impactful and then in turn put as a chair for our homeless committee in Oakmar was because he spent about 30 minutes making a human out of a homeless person, which is something that is taking considerable care and effort and is not terribly common. So one of the main causes for homelessness, in listening to not only Peter, but the actual owner and operator of the Homeless Alliance, was that the housing crisis is largely to blame for the homeless populace. There is a difference between unhoused and homeless, that people that are couch surfing and what have you. And maybe they have a roof over their head, but it isn't theirs. And, you know, there's a lot to be said for the weight of that. In looking at the budget proposal for this coming year, the efforts that are being made, I don't know if you're terribly familiar with what they are in the past, but they are quadrupled. And they will provide a large incentive to culminate both private and public funds. And the reason that is important is because putting them in place for landlords and actually towards deposits and rents and things like that is not allowed on one side or the other. So it's a culmination of the two in order to provide a better opportunity to house some of the currently homeless. That said, in the 22-year in performance report, the, of course, we had the provision of federal restriction to evict based on a nonability to pay in 2020 and 2021. During those terms, 83 and 85% of previously homeless stayed in permanent housing over six months. In 2022, that decreased to 23%. And the moratorium was a large difference in those two years. What is being proposed in the budget is actually a pretty exciting thing to us to incorporate a better opportunity for this. But I would like to highlight and maybe just put in- a better opportunity for this, but I would like to highlight and maybe just put in a brainstorm to address with planning and zoning the ability to reutilize existing structures that went away in the pandemic as useful, such as anything zoned commercial, maybe it was a big office building and people are working from home now, sometimes more effectively, to be able to utilize in, in a municipal design so that we can house previously homeless that went away with that. There's also, we've learned in different surveys, nineteen-hundred in a deficit for homes that would accommodate maybe a one or two-bedroom household. A large problem is that we are asking our consumers of my industry to buy or rent too much house. There is simply not enough of a product, in some cases financial, in some cases the actual real property, for them to consume in a way that would fit their needs and budget. So I would like all of those things to at least be kept in mind, but we are very excited to work in partnership and conjunction with all of these things, and certainly excited for the raise in funds and application to the budget. And I, of course, would encourage that to be increased threefold, to allow more than two teams to be doing this, as it is a very large city, and that's only six people. So if there's no questions for me, I'm done.
Thank you, Sarah.
I'm Gary Jones. I'm the Government Affairs Director for Oakmar, which is the Oklahoma City Metropolitan Association of Realtors. You may be asking today, why are Realtors here? The reason we're here is that Councilman Cooper, I think you started a great conversation that we already had. If you were doing something wrong, or if you were going in the wrong direction on an issue or a policy, this room would be loaded up. When you're going in the right direction and people think you're doing the right thing, nobody feels they need to say anything because they feel you got it. We decided that we wanted to be here to say thank you for doing what we think is going in the right direction on homeless policy and strategy in Oklahoma City. And we just wanted to make sure we took the time, so you're aware of that, so that when you're sitting there discussing the budget and you vote on it in the next couple of weeks, and you say, hey, are we getting this right? We want you to know, you know what? There were some people that came out and said, you know what? What we're doing on homeless is really important to this community, and we really appreciate that, and we wanted you to hear it. That's why we sat through the whole meeting. We could have put this online, we could have put this on Facebook, but we sat through the whole meeting so that when you get to that budget and you start looking at those items, you say, there was a group of people, Realtors, that came and told us that we're going in the right direction on this homeless stuff, so maybe we need to make this a priority and we continue to move forward. That's the bottom line. That's why we're here. And as Glenn pointed out, sixty-four percent of our membership, which represents about twenty-four hundred people, said this was the most important issue for them. It wasn't selling a house, it wasn't trying to find somebody to buy a house, it was this policy issue. And want you to hear it loud and clear, we're about more than selling houses. We're about our community, and for our membership, helping the homeless is where we want to begin. Thank you.
Can I, can I just also note, we've got nine plus one, two, three. So that's great. I really appreciate those comments. That's me counting.
And the fact that Glenn Kospur got up this early to come down here.
All right, well, thank you very much. That concludes our citizens who have signed up to speak, which means we have reached item five, adjournment, and we are adjourned.